Let us pray. Heavenly Father, you sit on your throne giving righteous judgments. We humbly ask you at this time to bless this gathering, all of the old public office in the town of Sheraw. Would you send down the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people? We ask you to bless our courts of justice and all my strength in this town, give them the spirit of wisdom and understanding that they would fear no power but laws alone, and that they may discern the truth and impartially administer the law. Heavenly Father, we know all leaders will be held by you to a higher account for their actions as they are responsible for others, and we know what you require them to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly before you. Would you empower us all here today to walk in your ways? In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please remain standing for the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the true love of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and every day and just for all.
Thank you, you may take your seat. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone here with a special thank you for being here. Council, you have seen your package minutes in March, eight, uh, council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Here none, or have the motion been accepted and presented?
So moved.
Is there a, any further discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries you now. Also, we have a copy of the March two thousand twenty-two financial report. Are there any additions or corrections to that report? Here none, or have the motion been accepted and presented?
So moved.
Is there a?
Sir.
Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries you now. At this time, we would like to recognize our former police chief, Keith Thomas, for his service with his service with the Sheraw Police Department. Keith, you and your family come forward. Keith, I would like to present you with a proclamation. Now, I want to leave it as presented here. A proclamation honoring Winston Keith Thomas for his dedicated service to the town of Sheraw. Whereas Winston Keith Thomas first joined the Sheraw Police Department in nineteen ninety-two, and whereas Winston Keith Thomas has spent the past thirty years in the Sheraw Police Department, rising through the ranks as police officer, narcotics investigator, sergeant, captain in the investigating division, as well as administrative captain, before being promoted to interim chief, and finally permanent chief in July of two thousand and fourteen. And whereas Winston Keith Thomas sought to increase his knowledge of police work by graduating from the Federal Bureau of Investigations in two thousand and thirteen, and provided sound, effective leadership, and was named the Sheraw Police Department's Officer of the Year in nineteen ninety-two, and also two thousand and eight. And whereas Winston Keith Thomas has provided sound, effective leadership of the town of Sheraw, fostering positive relations, demonstrating humility and strength while leading by example to protect and to serve. And whereas Winston Keith Thomas has chosen to retire from his position of police chief after faithfully serving the town of Sheraw, the Sheraw Police Department, the town citizens in the area for thirty years. Now therefore, it is resolved that the mayor, Sheraw Town Council, citizens of Sheraw, provide special recognition and highest praise to Winston Keith Thomas for his service, personal courage, and ever-begged diligence on guardianship of life and property in the town of Sheraw, and we wish him much success as he begins a new chapter in his career. This done this twelfth day of April two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, my friend.
I really appreciate this, Mr. Mayor, Council. It truly was an honor of mine to serve the town of Sheraw for thirty years, and to be the police chief for eight of those years. I was surprised when I was made the chief of police, to be quite honest with you, because everybody knows that I came to work every day and just tried to do my job. My father gave me some advice very early on in my life, and he said, "If you work hard, good things are happening to you." And that's how I tried to live my life and my career. I appreciate everything this council has done for the police department and for me personally. I also want to thank my family because they really sacrificed during this thirty-year career. Me and my wife have been married twenty-seven years in July. So she's been with me the entire time, and I appreciate what they have sacrificed because there's been many a time I had to get up from the dinner table and go to work. So I appreciate them, and as far as future endeavors, whatever God has in store for me will be his will, and we're going to leave it at that. But I appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all. Also, as a mentor of the town of Sheraw, I shoot you the fist to your wife. We hope that you will aim this proudly somewhere in your home or your offices or whatever, but we wanted to present this to y'all, and hope you enjoy it. Thank y'all for your sacrifice, standing behind your father all these years, and we appreciate the service that he has given this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget team.
Now this time, we also have another special recognition of our twelve, eight, twelve-year-under basketball All-Star team that won the South Carolina Athletic Pro League State Championship. Let's give them a big hand. Ryan, if you'll introduce everyone.
All right, this group of individuals, hardworking, resilient. As you can see, well, a few of our players are out of spring break, but we only had about eight players on this team. And we took this team, Terrence, the head coach, and Derek Gordon assisted, Max Strong was another one of our assistant coaches. But they took these guys, eight players, and they won the state championship. Not only did they do that, but they took this team to Georgia, to a stat team in Augusta, and they outworked that team. They represented the state of South Carolina well, and they represented the town of Sheraw well. Perfect. So let's give them a round of applause. We also want to present them with that. As I call your names, come up here and get one. Terrence Black. You look good, boy. My witnesses, Derek Kaiser, Justin Jordan, but they beyond other witnesses. Crawford Boo. Anthony Stone. Tony Powell, Rick, Tony. Coach Derek Gordon. And Coach Terrence Black. And also, you see that these guys are wearing a shirt in memory of a young man who lost his life tragically earlier in the year. His name was Tyler O'Thomas. And we also have a medal that we're going to be honored with. Thank you. And also, our Jimmy Guffey Award winner, so we want to present him with that award because he wasn't helping that horse, but we want to present this award to him. Thank you, Coach, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, for being here, appreciate it. I would like to say a word on behalf of myself and the town council. Thank you for participating in our reparation program. If it weren't for young men like yourself and many others, our reparation program would not be at the level that it's at today. You will never forget that you served and played on the state championship team. You'll never forget it, and we congratulate you. You've gone out and represented this community well, and it's great ambassadors to this community. You carried yourself as a young man, and we thank you for that. Thank you for representing your community and your pack. Thank you so much. We have a guest, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Janet Cower with PD Coalition, and we come forward. Here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm going to sit, this is a nice seat for you, because you've got a patchy. Again, I'm Janet Cower, and I'm with PD Coalition. I'm going to thank the council for letting me come today, and also for your continued support of PD Coalition. For those of you who don't know, PD Coalition is a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to the reduction of sexual assault, family violence, and child abuse and to reduce the victim. The month of April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Child Abuse Prevention Month. So I'm here today to bring a couple of awareness images to talk about those two issues. Every sixty-eight seconds, an American citizen is raped, and a lot of sexual assaults are not recorded. So when you look at sexual assaults, it might be a lot of them are reported, but it could be someone that you know and someone that you're close to that you may never know the trauma that they're dealing with. April, I mentioned it, Child Abuse Prevention Month. In twenty-twenty, Chesterfield County had four hundred recalls, or over four hundred calls for child abuse, and what, a hundred and fifteen of those were found. So I think that's a pretty high number for Chesterfield County that we need to work on. And as far as rear rates, number thirty out of forty-six counties were child bullying. We have a Durant Children's Center, which is to help children who are, who have all these type of things. They get friends and get abused and just different things with the children counseling, whatever it might be. And we have one in Hart School, Florence, and now in Sockers. If you would like to help for volunteer PD Coalition, we're always there to be the volunteers. It's a real good call, and like I said, I had a written date coming in, and I'm glad for a list that you need, but definitely I need them all, yeah. And I'm with the package with you. There are several events that we got coming up in the month of April that I'd like to bring your attention. April twenty-first, we have a video with gardening at Lyle. It's going to be on the Chesterfield Courthouse Mall, and it's going to start at six o'clock. We're also going to have a law enforcement training, which is going to be virtual on Tuesday, twenty-seventh, or actually, or Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, from two to four. So anybody that needs a law enforcement that they need, like to have that training, please apply to that. That's pretty much everything, so again, thank you for your continued support of PD Coalition.
Thank you, Janet, for being here, keeping us abreast of what all is going on in Chesterfield County with PD Coalition. We appreciate the service that y'all have done to lead people in the underground.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
We also have a guest with us today that wants to come before council, Mr. Van Patten. Talk about the growing story of pickleball, hey, dude.
Does that look like fun, sound like fun? That's the reason four point three million Americans play pickleball. And that's an increase of over a hundred percent over the last five years. Five years ago, there were two million people, and now there are four point three. So I've got some of my pickleball friends from Sheraw over here. Actually, Nicky's from Telesville, and he's got his own paddle tube. And we know that there's a big project on the books for Arrowhead Park, and we would really like to encourage council to include pickleball courts at Arrowhead. You can put six pickleball courts in the space that normally two tennis courts would go into. So it's not a whole lot of acreage. And it's a whole lot of fun. Now, we're members of the Chesterfield County Pickleball Association. There are three hundred and thirty-two people from the mailing list for that association. People from Sheraw, people from Telesville, from Darlington, Hart School, Florence, Laurenburg, Rockingham, Waysborough, Marshville, really all over the area. And they come out every Wednesday night to play in Chesterfield on courts at Coedlin Park. Now, if you knew the old Coedlin Park, there were two really ratty tennis courts there. Well, we raised some money, and I say we because the members of the association raised some money. We were able to resurface those courts and put in six pickleball courts. However, they did the job kind of along the cheek, and so instead of digging out all the cracks and patching them properly and resurfacing, they simply resurfaced. So that was about eighteen months ago, and the cracks are coming back. And we're not talking about hairline cracks, we're talking major cracks this big. So when the ball bounces, it doesn't bounce true, people are tripping, and we could move that entire program to Sheraw if we had more access to courts. So I'd like to make this pitch not just for the benefit of our rural community, and it's a great community, but also we see that there's an economic opportunity here. So Charlotte is hosting a pickleball tournament, week after next, I think, with over seven hundred players. Now, Charlotte's a whole lot bigger than Sheraw, right? However, Camden, which has a population, I looked it up, about seventy-three hundred, is not that much larger than Sheraw. And they are hosting a pickleball tournament this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and they had to cap the registration at four hundred and fifteen registrations. So think about all those people in the nice hotel, in Airbnb's around town, eating downtown. We see a lot of economic opportunity here. This is a sport that's growing exponentially. It's got a reputation as kind of an easier sport, you know, and used to be the old folks in the senior center playing pickleball. Well, we have high school kids who play, we have college students who play. One of men and women compete very nicely against each other. We have, one of our very best players is a sixty-year-old surgical nurse from Florence, and she drives from Florence every Wednesday night to compete against twenty-five and thirty and thirty-five-year-old men. She's got great hands, to be told. It's hard to get anything past her. So we see this as a tremendous opportunity for the town, not just for those of us who enjoy the sport. It's something that the high school kids do, well, the kids do in elementary school PE, high school PE. It's very accessible, you can buy decent paddles for eighty dollars. The balls actually last a long time, and it doesn't sound like fun. And if you've had a rough day at the office, you get to hit things. This sport has everything for every body. If it's too late for Arrowhead, we'd like to make another recommendation, and that is, we got some wonderful property on River Hill. Think if you had a beautiful blue and green and yellow, my mind's up, facility in one of Sheraw's gateways. That would give people the impression that this is an athletic, dynamic, growing community. And so we sincerely hope that you'll consider pickleball, first of all, for Arrowhead. And if that doesn't work, we may have to help out other properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we want to recognize the pickleball player, Peter.
Yes, so Nicky.
Sam.
Yes, Sam is here from Telesville, came all the way in. Benny Quick came from Greensboro.
And President Jackson from Greensboro. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
We are talking to a consultant about the plan, future plans for Arrowhead Park right now, so we're really looking at suggestions, and we're talking with them about that. Thank y'all for being here. And the committee, we got, we got the map, which is where. Mr. Van Patten is not here, so we're going for council's action. Now, council, we have set a reading in accordance, two thousand twenty-two dash twelve. This is an ordinance to classify short-term rental properties as R three occupations under the International Residential Code, Rob.
Mayor, last month we passed this, our first reading in which short-term rentals were termed best to be serviced, is being R three occupations under International Residential Code. Or is it?
Robbie, you hear the recommendation to set a reading in accordance, two thousand twenty-two dash twelve, like a motion to adopt set a reading. So moved. Is there a second?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, motion carries you now. Also, council, we have a first reading of three new ordinances. Our first one is an ordinance, two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen. This is an ordinance to amend the town Sheraw's official zoning map, three seven partial, two seven two dash zero zero one dash zero zero three dash zero zero one from R one exit, the family residential, the MC, which is Market Commercial Lot.
The property question is Sheraw First Baptist Church, just up here on Market Street. They approached the planning commission about rezoning with the possible intent of expanding their facilities. In order to do that, they need to transition out of a residential zone to a market commercial zone, which they mixed huge zones specifically for Market Street. The planning commission reviewed this at a public hearing, and so this change, after their review, comes as a recommendation from the planning commission.
Thank you, Rob. Council, first, you hear the recommendations from the planning commission. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, motion carries you now. Also, the first reading on the ordinance, two thousand twenty-two dash fourteen. This is an ordinance to amend the text of the Sheraw zoning ordinance section seven point two dash two to permit poultry and other livestock at permitted use as authorized by town and.
Rob. This is kind of a technicality. About five years ago, six years ago, town council passed an ordinance to allow people to roast chickens within the city limits under certain conditions. Zoning ordinance is still technically banned that, and there was an ordinance conflict. This just resolves the ordinance conflict.
Council, you hear the recommendation from the planning commission on the ordinance, two thousand twenty-two dash fourteen. Do I have a motion to accept the first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, motion carries you now. Also, the first reading of ordinance, two thousand twenty-two dash sixteen. This is an ordinance to amend section twelve dash eight, exempt signs of the town Sheraw zoning ordinance and repeal section twelve dash ten F eight of Sheraw zoning ordinance, Rob.
This is something the planning commission started looking at at their last meeting. This relates to the regulation of political signs in town. We've had a lot of complaints. We do have ordinance on the books, but it's all kind of pieces. It was actually taken out at one time and then put back in several years ago. And so the intent of the town has always been to just keep right-of-way clear and let signs be on private property. And so the planning commission works towards this. This is the first ordinance, so I have a public hearing on this on April twenty-fifth, I believe. And then this also ties into the resolution number seven that's coming up.
Council, you hear the recommendation of the planning commission. Do I have? Motion to accept first reading of the ordinance, two thousand twenty-two dash fifteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, motion carries you now. Thank you, Rob. Also, we have a resolution, a resolution zero six, patch two thousand point two, a resolution designating April as fair housing month.
This is just an annual resolution passage here as part of many of the grants we give from the community development block program. We require it passed, fair housing resolution, so this is all part of that process.
Council, you hear the recommendation, designated April as fair housing month, but I have a motion to accept the recommendation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, motion carries you now. Also, a resolution, seven dash two thousand twenty-two. This is a resolution to suspend enforcement of Sheraw zoning possession, twelve dash ten F eight dash eight dash eight regarding political signs to the town of Sheraw, Rob.
This relates back to previous ordinance. This is a request to suspend the enforcement of that ordinance while the planning commission does it for the, during this month.
Okay. So is this suspension, this is just for the upcoming primary and general elections? So what will happen after that, Rob, with that, the plant, the zoning?
The planning.
Changes or whatever?
The planning commission, the planning commission is, will make a final recommendation to council, and at that point, we'll have new regulations. We examine them, they're very burdensome essentially, and there's some things that are kind of incompatible with elections and kind of throwing against law. And so this will suspend that until the planning commission can review it, and they'll come back and file a recommendation.
Should've, we haven't had a problem, I mean, a real problem, to recognize.
Basically, but then over the past several years, we've kind of, everybody's kind of been in the spirit of the ordinance, and now it's gotten to the point where it's not fair, Rob, to have to go out and patrol and figure out what's. And so we're just trying to make some concerted effort and come up with some real things that we don't have to be questioned on in the future.
Yes, that'd be.
Would that be sidewalk signs or where they're, I mean, I know where the flood is, it's a new tree.
Yeah, it's basically come down the right-of-way and determine what is the right-of-way. You know, it's easy when you have the sidewalk and a road. You know, that area between the sidewalk and roads is the right-of-way. So, but when you have just a paved road and no sidewalk, then you get into, and in Churro, we have multitude of various right-of-ways, whether it be thirty feet on one to a hundred and twenty feet on another. And so it's kind of hard to judge. And so we're gonna come up with some suggestions within the case of a road just saying, okay, it can be placed so many feet off the edge of the road. So we don't have to continually go out and look. We don't also have the manpower to do this.
Definitely, and obviously, definitely we do.
Yeah, so this is, and in the future, when we do pass, we do see something that's illegal, and we'll take the signs up. In the past, we've been had extended the cursing and tried to tell people. And, but it's still getting to the point where we can't do it. Just not fair.
Council, you hear the recommendation from the planning commission to pass on resolution zero seven dash two thousand twenty-two, lacking a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
A motion, that's the third second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing all those who favor the motion, say aye. Aye, or opposed, motion carries you now. At this time on our agenda, we extend the invitation for you to make comments during our citizens' comment theater. So having said that, if anyone here or present that would like to address council at this time, please step forward. Please state your names.
My name is Francis Rush Dan.
And I'm Nicholas Rush Dan.
And we're on the Blue Springs on Market Street.
Yes, and our complaint is, we basically, we talked about the Spring Festival. During the Spring Festival, we basically worked over that, you know, they were gonna block off, you know, our big area and that park and crap, you know, all the way down our building, all down the street about, you know, the road that we own. And basically, most of our revenue comes from call-ins and stuff like that. But being that they blocked off, we were thinking that, you know, that
We would get some rock.
You know, that the park and crap, we all the way down the street, and that would get, you know, walk-through traffic. So, you know, that didn't happen, we basically, they did too much walk-through traffic. And then, you know, we actually lost, we could have did better on a regular day than the Spring Festival, when you think of that. The Spring Festival is supposed to be, you know, the biggest event in Churro at the time. We just kind of just felt left out, you know what I mean?
Yeah, because as we see, the numbers are marked down the street, and it's, I took everybody, cameras up there, some way up in that area. So we started the impression that it was gonna be all the way down the street. So it's like, okay, that's where there's some walk-through traffic. We didn't have to worry about calling in, and the people that's traveling, since the roads are blocked off. So we didn't get any of that. What we got was the quarter John cost.
Yeah, they put quarter John basically in front of our building. And basically, I mean, I seen more people around quarter John than basically coming up, you know. And then people were coming in asking you to dial for quarter John. I was just disrespecting, you know what I mean? And I just said, and we ended up, we had live music, and we ended up closing early. But, you know, we ended up losing, like I say, we could have did better on a regular day. Roads weren't blocked off and all of that. You know, we just, we just feel like that in the future, should have had better planning on how they doing all this.
And to make sure you stop your local businesses, because like, you need to make five months' hours, right?
It was bad, I don't want to discuss one, but it was just bad.
But that's awful. And we had live music, we had doorway food. You know, now we're fair to us by us paying our taxes every month, and what we supposed to do? Trying to do, I've been doing the right thing.
Yeah, and all the attraction that we get.
Is the bathroom.
So I just wanted to let y'all know that, and I appreciate y'all, you know, listening to us.
So thank you for bringing this to our teaching, and hope you improve on that and that sort of shit. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jake Soplin. I wasn't gonna say anything, but when the guy up here was talking about the pickleball situation, he's not lying, right? I passed by that park every Wednesday going to mom's house for dinner. And it's split with people, it's a problem. Every Wednesday, there's at least a hundred and fifty people out there at that park. It's like a private thing, you know, so I don't know that y'all even consider it or not, but it seemed like it's something worth looking into. Because I passed, I mean, even this cold that I had, I'm like, man, what are you doing out here? So I was just saying, he wasn't lying. Really, we're all supposed to invite us, and we want to consider it.
Any questions? At this time, I'd like to request that council go into executive session to discuss personnel and contract matter. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion, say aye. Aye, or opposed, motion carries you now. We will go into the jury room, if we don't think of, thank you. Your weapon is steady, continue. Return.